Well, 7:35. I'd like to call this meeting of the planning board to order. On the agenda, first on the agenda is Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Niles Ager from Zenith Consulting Engineers. We're here before you, the last hearing, as I'm sure everyone is aware. We had some significant discussion regarding the lot layout and how we were going to proceed with it. So I told you we would go back to the drawing board as far as the lot layout. And this is what we've come up with, I believe. We dropped off a set of plans today to your board and also here for demonstration. We were able to, the biggest difference is that we were able to, like I said, we were able to utilize the easement area because of the recent zoning change. We were able to use that area into the lots and, as you can see, significantly changed the configuration of those lots. So we have not made any other changes to this point. We've gotten, as Zink had just shown me, we had gotten review comments from HML Associates, which was the representative consultant for the Conservation Commission, as well as Mr. Peck from the Highway Department. We wanted to make sure we're going to address all the concerns that are there, and for the most part, they're very minor concerns. We're going to address them, we're going to actually meet with them beforehand. But the point of this meeting tonight is just to come in front of you, make sure that before we go too far ahead of ourselves, that the board is happy with this lot configuration and get any input that you have regarding it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. But as you can see, I'm sure you remember, but we had all these strips.
Yes.
Fifty-foot strips, yes. So these all comply zoning-wise. Oh, another thing I wanted to mention was, I did meet informally with Mr. Nate Dalling regarding this layout, and he gave it a blessing. He feels as though it definitely complies with his only requirement from what he could see. And I just wanted to make sure that we were on board with him as well, because obviously he's a big factor in this as well. So I did show it to him, and he believes that it does comply.
I know it's early. Is that going to have a center island in the turnaround, or is that going to stay just a big circle as drawn?
It can change, obviously.
Well, yeah, we don't show an island here, because this is just a lot layout. We can put whatever the board likes. We're open to whatever. Personally, I'd rather not have an island, because nobody maintains them. They become an issue for plowing, they become an issue for people that maintain, they become an issue for, when you have the curbing, the plow trucks hit them. I have one, a project that I worked on a couple of years ago, and it's already destroyed. The curbing's already destroyed from it. But again, it really comes down to your preferences. We'll provide whatever the board, and I would think it would also be the fire department as well, would be a major factor in what they would want. But we're open and remenable to whatever.
Well, I'm just looking at, I thank you for taking the time to get this redone. It looks a lot, lot better. It seems like we're going to have one homeowner with potentially, but that's what it is on that lot. And then the rest of them, it's a little bit, I like it much better. The law that you're referring to, or the status change with respect to the usage of the drainage easement, did that in fact pass? Did we talk about that last time as being something that maybe the AG had not yet signed off on?
On the last time, he hadn't yet.
And he has now?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
From what I understand...
They typically do.
It's done, okay.
Nate, Mr. Dalling had mentioned that he sees no issues with it at all. So he, it's basically just a matter of time. I sat down with him probably about two weeks ago, and he stated that he would feel very confident moving forward with what's here.
Okay. I haven't been on the board very long, and I just wanted to check before if we, that it was okay for us to say.
Absolutely. And we were aware of that change when we originally did the layout, but then, of course, it wasn't signed, so we had to go with what was in the regulation. So that's why we are where we are today.
A change like this is typically, is actually in the favor of the developer. But it's accepted, it's a pretty normal thing to do. Thirty years ago, if you were looking to hurt the developer at every turn, you might have not done that. But it would only have been for that. You know, it makes sense.
What's that, to get rid of the...
No, of being able to use the drainage easement as part of it.
Right.
The... And then, I mean, the normal citizen wouldn't know it.
Right.
Anyway, that's just one of those control things. It's, I, by the way, I'm delighted with what you did, with what you've done.
I'd like to just take a consensus from the board, what your thoughts are on the new design of the plan.
I think it's 100 times better. You know, and that one dog-legged lot is really not very, not bad at all. There's lots of developments that have that.
And that's because of wetlands. That's not because of someone trying to scrape out a few extra feet. You're working around a wetland, and the lower... Yes?
And the wetland line that you see before you has been not officially approved by the commission, but Mrs. Yates, the agent, has been out and reviewed the line, and what you see is what she agrees upon. So I believe that's what the indication will be with the commission as well. So we're not working with something that could change. So we're very confident that the upland area that is shown on here is accurate as well, just so that the board has an update of that. We are going to be meeting with the commission on September 12th. That's our hearing. We believe we should be getting approval at that hearing, if we can address all the concerns from Mr. Peck and HML Associates, which we believe we will.
Very good. I think you have a positive by me.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Niles.
Stay at your seat.
Nope. Niles, you set up an appointment for another meeting after ConCon, correct?
Okay, do I need to, that was, actually, that's a question I meant to ask. So if I have all the concerns addressed with HML as well as Mr. Peck, can I set up a meeting with you beforehand? Or do I have to wait till Conservation approves?
Well, they're the 12th, right?
Correct. When's your next hearing, I guess?
I think we have September...
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
We have a September...
It was the 21st would be the following week.
So September 7th and then the 21st?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I don't know how the board would like to do it. I mean, can you, can the board approve prior to commission approving? Typically, you can, but I didn't, you know...
Yeah, because I...
We have, yeah.
Why would we do that, though? Why wouldn't we wait?
Well, because...
Well, we can put him on the agenda, he can be on the agenda for the September 21st meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Well, I can do, no, I was asking to be put on the 7th, but I can be put on the 21st as well, if that's what the board would like, that's fine.
Why don't we do it after Conservation, just in case they tweak something?
Absolutely. That makes sense.
And that way, we're not coming back.
And it's, okay, so put me on for the 21st. Do I, do I meet with, who do I meet with to notify the butters and all that? Do I meet with...
Is that going to be the hearing? For the notification of butters?
Because that's what I need, I need to, you know, I obviously need to put the legal ad in, notify all the butters for the official public hearing.
Do we have to approve it before we can notify the butters?
I think we've already seen it. We've already seen it twice now. We're supposed to see it before we put it in the paper.
So, but we have seen it, so, okay.
But we have seen it twice already, so...
But then you approve it at the public hearing, right?
And then we approve it at the public.
Because I do have the butters list.
Okay.
And you could make it through the 21st, couldn't you? For September 21st? You'd have to be able to.
I just did the legal ad for September 7th for Red's Road. So if you want me to, I'll start this process.
For the 21st? And do we have to advertise twice? And we will have that?
I know, for Red's Road, I do. So I have to, is this the same type of...
I believe so.
Exactly the same.
Okay. All right, so...
They'll give us two notifications and everything?
Perfect.
Well, you wait for me to give you the legal ad for the butters.
Yes, correct. Absolutely.
I think I have your information. Niles at Zenith.
Yeah, or we can, yeah, we can reach out to you as well.
Just to make it formal, I moved schedule a public hearing for...
September 21st.
What do you call it? It's Pasco Estates, September 21st, 7:30.
I'll second that.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We should make sure that at that night, we collect the fee, because we're going to be doing all the advertising in advance.
Thank you.
If you already...
That one, I turned it into fees, $1,700. I turned in on that.
Oh, really? All right, never mind.
$300 back in April. They turned it in. Yeah, so I have this and $1,700. Good thing you said that, because...
Next on the agenda, Paul. Paul Turner.
How you doing?
How are you?
Good, you?
Very good.
Is anyone seeing this?
You have to have a photocopy.
Okay.
This is for a...
Yeah. Lot change between four and six.
Okay.
There you go.
So this isn't the... Okay.
Is this merely because now you're keeping that house?
Correct.
Not to be a wise guy, but that's as simple as it is, right? Yeah, okay. Yep. Yeah, I like it, it looks good. I drove down there a week or two ago.
Oh, thank you.
Looks excellent.
You're going to move into one of these.
Excuse me?
You're going to take one of these. You're going to move into one of these.
I'm going to keep the cabin. This is going to be my house.
Which is the cabin?
This one right here.
It was originally...
Lot six.
So it's just an exchange of land for, to reconfigure the lot line?
That's it.
The two lots.
Was that just to gain a setback, is the reason, was that the reason for the...
No, I had the setback. It says...
Why did you decide to redraw the line, just out of curiosity?
Originally, I was going to demolish the cabin and just build a new house, set over it this way. I decided to keep it, I remodeled the house. I've put a landscape barrier in between the two houses. So it just makes sense to have the property line over like that.
Okay. More or less aesthetic.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Entertain the motion.
In a second.
You're going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, there you go.
You have to entertain it, then somebody makes it, okay?
I do have to entertain it.
In a second.
Yeah, second then.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I just ask us the vote to approve changing the lot line for lot six?
We're approving the...
For the lot?
We're approving A and R.
Move for that one?
Yes.
Lot six.
I think has one.
Lot correct.
Four and six.
We're approving A and R. And he'll record it in time and all that stuff. And here's the...
One and six.
Yes, it is.
Want all of them at once, Brian?
Sure.
Copy, Zini?
Five, I believe, is that right? Four? Four in the miler?
We have to sign the same one.
No, he gets the miler.
He keeps that? Yeah, but we, is that the fifth copy?
No, no, I don't think so. We have one, two, three, four, yeah, then one more.
That one's good.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Yep.
Zink, can I borrow your briefcase?
Yeah. Is that black?
Yeah. You don't care?
It's fine, isn't it?
I don't know.
Oh, you're those legalese, real estate people.
I'm sorry, it's not United...
Yeah? Real estate people, blue ink.
Estate, I just find out contracts in blue ink, estate. But now the photocopy is going to go in the...
Yeah, right?
So you got the check, Emily?
No. No. And then, do we come in plans, do we, one is outside, does one go through the section, or what do I...
I believe so. We keep, we have five.
And just the miler of Detroit?
Yes.
I'm just curious, I'm going to write the downstairs numbers.
But what do we do with five of the plans?
Did Janice always, there's one in the building department.
Pauline always asked for five, we just gave her five.
We're trying to cut down on paper.
Yeah, that's a lot of extra filing.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. You only need one copy.
You know, you're hitting a nail on the...
If you know where it is.
Yeah, if you know where it is. That's what I'm trying to do, Janice.
This is, you know, we have the file cabinets without labels, you know, and that's the sort of office we have.
We got them all labeled now, Zink.
Oh, I'm just looking over there, I just see...
Oh, those are mine.
Yeah.
I know what's in it.
Do you know what?
With the licenses.
Yeah, I think they all stay with Rita. That's what everyone says, I know where they are.
Well, it considers this one lot, so... Sometimes, sometimes we take, there was...
I steal?
Take, oh, one lot.
Yeah.
So it's $100, Paul.
Yeah, okay.
It's what we would, you would call that a one-lot subdivision.
Because one is a...
Let me get, I've got the fee scheduled.
Even though, obviously, there's two lots involved, because there always, there's another lot.
Right.
But...
Yeah, under Form A, approval not required, $100.
Yes. And this is considered one lot, because it didn't increase the number of lots.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
We haven't made up to Rita, right?
Yep.
Just to clarify, Zeke, I understand what you're saying. You're saying you have two parcels. They're both affected, but you're paying for the one that's, you know, you're only paying for one side.
It's, I'm not exactly saying that. I'm saying that what the state calls it is a one-lot subdivision, the rules are under the rules for one-lot subdivision, where you're allowed to move any, any lot line you want, anywhere, because...
Right.
But you haven't increased, you haven't made a new lot.
Right, you're only affecting...
You haven't invented a new lot.
Right.
Now, if you invent a new lot, then you, it's a, it's a different kind of...
Right. Is there anything else?
Thank you for taking the time to teach me these things as we go.
Lots eight and nine you're holding for us.
Okay.
For the road. I'd like to get lot eight released.
Okay.
Do you have a map of the whole?
I'm not supposed to read it.
No, I talked to Janice and Rita, and they just said to come and talk about it.
What do you call it, ledgewood?
Ledgewood, yep.
How far along in the construction are you?
On?
On the road?
There's about $40,000 left to finish, 100%.
What do you have left to do?
I have sidewalk, subgrade's already done, top coat, and sign. Just a couple of little things like that. Retention pond's all done. Grass is high, it's all good.
In the retention pond?
Not in it, on the edges.
Yeah.
Everything, yeah. Everything's stabilized.
Yeah. When did you start mowing?
I don't know. Couple of months ago.
Oh, you already did?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not that high, it's just, it's high.
It's, yeah.
Yeah. It's growing.
How many more foundations to go in, other than the one that's at the end? That's the last one?
Yeah, that's it for now. I'm going to leave lot nine for now.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right.
I can't find the, there's an empty slot, says Ledgewood Estates. It's an empty...
You went in the file cabinet?
Where the roll drawings go.
It's empty, someone's got it out.
So you didn't look in...
Do you know the numbers offhand of what we're holding, or is it just lots?
You're holding lots eight and nine.
Okay. But no cash, is that right? Okay. He's asking.
You didn't look in the right file, Zink.
Yep.
She didn't even find out what it is.
And it's labeled.
She's just giving you a hard time.
No, the roll drawings.
Yeah, what she wrote on here was sign, plan, and roll up. And you couldn't find it in there.
It's empty.
She might have it in her office.
Well, that, this is a single one, it's all right.
But do you need a form to...
We need a form, yes.
Release the money. You know what, no. I have a form.
There's no, there's no money right now.
Well...
This is a profile, so... It's not a face sheet.
I have a release of funds folder.
What's that?
She's got, I've got a file here for release of funds, but this is release of lot?
Releases a lot?
Yes.
For one.
Because we're holding the lot as collateral?
Yeah, I have a form out, so I took a form.
That sounds right.
We're about certified for work in the ground called, by the covenant of David. Well, this is covenant of approval release. Form out. Remember that meeting when we all responded, that's...
Yes, yes, lots designated, yes.
That's the one?
Yes, and go down a little further. Yeah, even further.
That's the note.
Okay, and then she rewrote that, yeah. Because it used to be printed in...
At the wrong date, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So print this out, and you guys can sign it?
Well, she has to fill it out.
Well, that's what I mean. I'll print it, and you can fill it out.
I don't have any objections to it, you know?
And what does the last, what does the last estimate say? I mean, for finishing? What did Jeremy...
He goes like 35, it's like 40,000, so we're going to finish it.
Oh, okay, okay.
More than adequate, one lot...
Yes, yes.
...in value. Okay, so this is a sample we can use.
Are you going to do the paving before nine, or probably not?
How about that print?
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, I'm actually, I'm going to keep a nine for myself.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, all that stuff. You said we're holding seven and, I mean, eight and nine?
Correct.
And we're releasing seven and eight.
Yep, seven and eight. This one says seven and eight.
You have seven and eight now.
We have to look at the plan.
So you have it. Check this out. So you've already sold seven, right?
Mm-hmm. Which lots are you holding? I believe you're holding...
Let's see. It says, "And said lots are hereby released from the restrictions as to sale and building specified thereon. Lots designated on said plan as follows: Lot seven, lot eight." Lot, lots designated on said plan as follows, lot seven, lot eight. So you have lot eight.
Okay, so that means you're holding back nine, and then the cabin lot, six.
Okay, so you want us to release lot six?
If you'd like, sure.
Is, is that what you're asking?
I, I should have read that before I came, I didn't see that.
Six is the one with the cabin on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that, that's of no use to us.
Right.
Do you have any idea who wrote this?
You guys did it at the meeting when he was here last time.
We wrote that.
Someone here did.
Mm-hmm.
Was at that meeting. Lola looked it up. I notarized.
Okay, that's not my eight.
That looks like my writing. That's why I'm thinking, I'm scratching my head saying.
I believe you did write it.
Yeah?
My, my eight is two zeros laying down.
Is this, the original thing holding it?
Yeah, that's the original covenant.
Does it save the lots in here?
Well, I was just deducing that six and nine have.
Okay.
A six, six he's not gonna be building on, he's gonna be living on in an existing house. So it's not like.
You're not actually holding two lots.
We, we, we can't. It, it's not a lot to us, you know?
Right.
It's not a lot. Because you don't have to pull a building permit on it. See, the building inspector would look at this and say, um, I can release seven and eight. And, um. And, like you said, eight and nine are the only two that you haven't pulled billing permits for, for, right?
I think that's, those are exactly the same, aren't they? This is the recorded one, and this was. Because they're notarized much. Yeah, I think this is just the recorded copy and that was.
Mm-hmm.
The original.
Do these both go in here? Yes.
Yeah, they were both in the, the file. Do you want me to look in there and see if there's any, any other releases?
No, we only did the one release.
No, that's just.
We only did one release.
Yeah.
So I think you should, you should be all set.
Okay. So we're actually already there at that.
Yeah.
Lot nine, yeah.
Yep. It's all in prime line. Uh, Lola had put it all in order, so yeah, that looks like it.
Yeah, that goes on top.
They already released.
Easy enough.
Very good.
All right.
Make that easy, huh?
Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
So, so we still have nine.
Thank you. Yes.
What?
And, and pretty, yeah, and, and you pretty soon are gonna do the road, right? Because it's, you're gonna do it this year?
I don't know, we'll see.
Yeah.
See what happens on lot eight?
Yeah, I'd like to get all the driveways done and do the whole thing at once.
Yeah.
She was coming back. I got some spoils from the blasting that, I haven't dealt with that either, so.
You gotta sell them, they're all the same color, they're pretty. It's a nice color.
Flat rock, yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice color rock.
So.
Just a lot of it.
A lot of it, yeah. So I don't want to be hauling on a new road.
Yeah.
All set?
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Next on the agenda. The A and R plan for Main Street. Yep, that's it. We've already looked at it, town, uh, council has already commented on it, made recommendations.
I, I move we sign the plan and waive the fee.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy.
Yeah, it's just too. Too complicated to talk about. It, it says.
Yep.
See, it says right, they stamp right on it that Lakeville Planning Board endorsement makes no determination as to compliance with zoning. I mean, it just, we're just out of it.
Well, because the zoning board took care of it.
It's just.
Get the magic pen?
Yes, I do.
I think I don't know if you heard earlier, the CBA.
I did.
Approved that, and then they've been recorded.
Yeah, and it's so, it just goes straight to the lawyer, and just.
Okay.
I do think it's a good decision, if I was reading this, that's.
Yeah.
Pass it on this way?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, well, seeing as the zoning board, um. You know, gave them the, whatever it is.
Variance.
Variance.
The thing is, they kept that as residential, we didn't rezone that business, where the assessor's building used to be? It's not, it's new label.
They tried to re, they tried it once, and it failed at town meeting.
We tried to draw the neighborhood business from our master plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And it failed.
Uh, she has my blue pen.
Okay.
Master plan is back at work, Diana.
Good.
The lot is only good. It's not good for resi- residential.
No, but it'll be used for residential.
They can't apply for, um, home occupation.
So you'd have to live there, Sharpie.
Yeah.
Who would want to live there?
Pretty cute upstairs. It is a cute house. It is a cute house, but that's a tough location.
Good second. So much traffic going by that you hate to waste the commercial space. You don't have that much.
Exactly.
Commercial space.
Exactly.
And it's, uh, it's not like it's.
That's his, that's Zeke's.
All right.
Excellent commercial.
Is there a rubber band with this one?
Yep.
Pencil list for seed pond. Seed pond.
Let's slide up.
Sure. You saw Jeremy's pencil list?
Yes.
We did, yes.
Uh, bracket, I know, Janice.
Scott Sweet.
Oh, all right, I've met you before.
Yes, oh, yeah. Twenty seed of pond.
Two seed of pond, Dennis Santos.
What do you think about his, um, his pencil list?
Well, we're here primarily to hear what the board thinks about item number two, which has to do with the chain link fence being installed around the drainage parcels. The rest of it seems pretty self-explanatory.
Mm-hmm.
By way of cleaning out the drainage parcels, cutting the grass, mowing some of the slopes, sweeping the roadways, catch basins, trimming the trees. All that stuff is pretty, pretty straightforward. What was the real surprise, I guess, was this idea of putting in a chain link fence around the drainage parcel, something that. We hadn't heard previously, and we're here to hear what your take is with regard to that, and hopefully get an answer to that so that we can, we can push this thing forward and continue to address the items that are on here with the developer, um, and be ready for hopefully a town meeting later this year to get this road approved.
Is anyone driven by that location to look at the drainage pond? I have not.
No, not for a while.
How deep is it, and what are we talking about here? I mean, Jeremy doesn't say this on every property, right? He, they're.
No.
Right, we, right, so.
I mean, you, I don't understand, I mean, you either, you either mow it.
Well, it could be that.
Or you fence it.
It could be the height.
But if you're mowing it, why is it?
I don't know what the depth would be.
Yeah, I mean, it, the thing is, it's, it's pretty deceiving because it's a rather large.
Mm-hmm.
Drainage area, which I think was made for basically.
Hundred year storm.
We had, we had the hundred year storm that we had years back, we had the seventeen inches over the course of the two, the two storms. We had major issues in the development, and what happened is, came back to the planning board, there was a redesign of the plan, they, they cut in kind of a, we'll call it between two, two parcels, kind of a canal that leads to a large retention area.
Mm-hmm.
The retention area is enormous in my mind. It's rather large, and you start talking about putting in chain link fence around this entire area, it's gonna be.
Was that the one on the right-hand side?
As you go in. On the left-hand side, as you go in, um, you know, probably three quarters of the way down, um, there's, so it's a connection between. If, if you think about the, the subdivision, you go in and then there's the big circle, which is seed of pond, and then there's two lots in the middle there. And what happens is there's, there's kind of a drainage area behind here that then feeds to this other one that goes across the street and goes into the large retention area. Now, retention area is primarily dry. I mean, it's not something.
It's dry.
That has, you know, a lot of standing water in there. It's, it's a huge area that the water just, if we do get any water from a storm, dissipates and that's the end of it. So, you know, in terms of standing water in that, that retainer area, it just doesn't seem to be a major issue from, from what we've seen over the years, subsequent to that storm and subsequent to the installation.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you're talking about gradual slopes on, on the sides, you know, what the ultimate depth is in terms of where they, they started at, and, and in terms of what they ended up with the, the lower level. I, I don't know what that actual number is.
It's limited access as well. I mean, it's literally set back between two neighbors' homes. So for, you know, the proverbial child to drive down there isn't really feasible, not something that would happen.
My boys would find it, I'll tell you that, but I also think they look terrible. I'm just gonna come out and say, I've been around a couple of neighborhoods. Uh, the one that comes to mind is I thought we have a development, maybe Jennifer Lane?
Yep.
And I think Jennifer Lane has a large retention pond with a fence, and it does not, for that neighborhood, it just, I just don't know why.
The fence doesn't look good.
No, it really doesn't. Uh, but I don't know why they would have put it in. Was it a liability concern? Maybe Jeremy's thoughts were, so.
The question is this, are these drainage lots that the town is ultimately gonna end up owning and be liable for?
Are we? Are they?
I don't know.
Okay.
Those drainage, are they separate drainage lots, or are they on someone's property?
I'm assuming it's on someone's property, but I guess that's not a good thing to do.
No, I wouldn't consider.
No, if it's drainage parcel A.
Yeah.
It's all by itself.
And we own it at some point.
If the developer doesn't pay the taxes on it.
I see, you're right. Okay.
I mean, I mean, in terms of liability, we have a significant pond basically across the street in the middle of the development.
Yes.
So.
That's the old irrigation pond.
Uh, yeah, actually, yes, it is, yes.
Correct, they pumped out of it.
They, they actually had two. They had made a man-made one, and then there was actual seed of pond, which.
Yeah.
They did have pumps that they would pull out of that pond to actually irrigate the box, yes.
But the town doesn't own it.
Right, were they, are they part of someone else's parcel?
The pond?
Yes.
No.
They're not?
Open space. Nobody owns it technically.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the lots in the subdivision, you know, there's a number of abutters to the pond, but the actual pond is not owned by anybody in the subdivision.
Okay.
Because there's actually a butters on Long Point Road, which also abut the pond. But, you know, when you look at the lot lines, some of those lots go into the pond a little ways. And we have some open space that abuts the pond as well, a, as a neighborhood, you know. We have an HOA, which, which kind of addresses another item down the list here in terms of form and association to handle some of the trees and mulch and islands near the entrance in open space um, with a written operation and maintenance plan. So that's something that we don't view as being a hindrance. We have a HOA already established, so we can come to some, I, I guess, agreement at some point with regard to what you really want us to do on the center island and everything, but.
Right. And also with what you want to do with the island.
Sure, I mean.
You guys live there.
We, we essentially are gonna maintain it, we're gonna, we're gonna mulch it and, and keep it looking, you know, weed, you know, get rid of all the weeds and, and just making sure that it's presentable in the entrance and, and everything along those lines. And that's what the HOA is there for, to beautify the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And deal with any of the open space that we have. So, but, so I, I don't want to digress and move to number six, but coming back to.
No.
I guess the, uh, the parcel, you know, in terms of what the thoughts are about whether a fence would have to be installed there. This really was a surprise when, when we got to, to this point here, and it was a question for the board, I guess, as, as he did his inspection.
We didn't ask for it before.
No.
No one else asked for it before. It's not a reasonable request.
It's not on the drawing?
Yeah. It's, it's not a, I mean.
We've never seen any indication of it.
No.
Yeah. I, I don't know, in terms like the ASBIL or.
No, the drawing, the original drawing.
Instruction drawings.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
No, the, the drawing that's filed with.
Yeah.
Did Janice go through the files today, Ryan?
Yeah.
To see if, she saw this, and she said, did the planning board ever bring this up before? And she took the time to go through the seed of pond file. She couldn't find anywhere. Uh, she didn't check minutes of the meetings, but she couldn't find anything.
We would have, we would have asked for it to be on the list.
Yeah, we, we kinda asked it.
She couldn't find anything.
Give them something more notice than this.
Well, I, I entertain the motion that if it isn't on the plan, I don't think we should fire.
Right. I, I, I agree, and I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I mean, as far as the fence goes.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if there's some other.
That's all I was.
Yeah.
Considering.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, now, do you guys want to go right through the list? Is that what the deal is?
No.
I, I don't know if we, if we need to, but if you'd, if you'd like to, we can.
Not particularly. I thought you guys, I thought you guys would like to, to, you know, make an effort with doing some of it, not, I mean, I'm not gonna address everything here.
Yeah, no, no, so the, the real issue was trying to get an answer to this one, because this would be a, a real roadblock to doing this.
Yes.
So we got the answer to that.
Yeah.
The rest of the items, we'll be, we'll be talking to the developer to say, hey, look, we gotta get this stuff done and get this all scheduled out and.
Yes.
Addressed, and then schedule, I guess, a subsequent review by Jeremy to, to come out and take another look at things and make sure he's comfortable with what was done with regard to making sure that trees are not overhanging sidewalks or anything like that.
Right.
And deal with the street signs as well, so.
Yeah, because everything else on here, I think he has a legitimate, um. Issue on.
Sure.
Well, just out of curiosity, where you guys are the HOA, right there, will you elect, do you believe you'll elect to have that parcel, the drainage section, um, insured? For liability? Do you have a concern? I don't know what other neighborhoods do, I'm just curious.
That's an interesting question. Um, at this point, we own and have had deeded to us two parcels. One parcel that leads down to the pond, um, off of Seed of Pond Road, and then we have another parcel that is, again, open space off of Quikasham. Those are the only two parcels that we are responsible for as an HOA in terms of actually having deeded to us.
Okay.
Anything else that he may have in terms of reservation or rights in the roadways and all the, of, other items that, um, maybe was not a lot and, and maybe just has drainage on it now at this point, we don't actually have any of that. We're, we're not legally, um, owners of, of those particular parcels at this point.
You're.
And it's not considered open space, so.
Right.
We didn't have a deed to it.
Right. And the, the, the town only takes a, it doesn't take the title to the road.
Unless there was a.
Circles.
Right, ever.
Ever. It, it just, it just takes an easement.
Mm-hmm.
So you, you might have, you might have a general liability policy anyway.
We have, we have a HOA insurance, which is covering, um, general liability for.
Whatever, yeah.
That comes up that, you know, we may be named as, as a, a potential party to some lawsuit, especially with having the pond in the neighborhood, and we purchase signs to put up, you know, no trespassing, no swimming. Things of that nature.
Right.
We're trying to address all those items, but that's off of our open space which abuts the pond, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So we're trying to deal with all those items as well.
Right.
But this other item here, like, I don't know, like, initially, obviously, this wa, this wasn't a parcel, it was basically, it was maybe supposed to be like a future roadway going over to where T.L. Edwards was.
That's what it was.
If you think back to the initial plans, that he had, he initially had an idea that maybe he was gonna extend over there and buy some more land from T.L. Edwards and put it in this, kind of a second phase. And that never happened, so I don't know if this particular parcel might be on what was initially maybe some, just some potential future expansion of, of the subdivision. I, I just don't know. I just don't know.
I remember the conversations as being, he thought he had lost some lots.
He did.
He did.
It was supposed to be thirty-one, thirty-one lots initially, and ended up being thirty was the final number. And that's one of the open space areas on Quikashan, which ultimately, I think he lost a lot over there to deal with some of the water issues that were...
He should've lost them just for naming them, using their names.
That was his real estate company.
So, I guess, item number six is my other question. So, is there something that we need to do now at this point with regard to, you know, form an association, handle, we have an association, but I guess that next step of a maintenance plan, is there something we need to be doing right now in the next couple of months to deal with this? Or is this something that we can, we can work toward over the course of time in terms of a written plan or a maintenance plan, I guess, agreed upon with the town? I'm not sure what, if there's some formal agreement that we have to start drafting or what the situation is with regard to that.
You might wanna stop in to see Jeremy and see what...
I'd contend that we already have that. If you look at both the bylaws and the covenants within the HOA.
Yep.
It describes what you...
He calls for a written maintenance plan, like, for instance, we're going to mulch very shortly the entire area, so...
I'd, yeah, I'd address that with Jeremy.
Show it.
Yeah, because we are, we're responsible for all the plans.
If you have time, if you have time, like, someone have time during the day to see him?
Yeah, we'll get in touch.
Yeah, we can work that out.
It's so great that you have that. My neighborhood doesn't, and we have two, and people just pay for it. I mean, we just have to chip in, and people have, the people that live on the cul-de-sac choose to do it. So, it's great that you guys have that HOA. And probably what it's asking for. I know, I know, I know, I know. But he probably is saying this because he just wants to have some expectation of what it is you guys are gonna be doing, so that if someone calls him to complain, he can say, well, actually, right, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, we certainly don't want this overgrown and becoming nice or coming into the subdivision and having problems there. That's certainly not what anybody in the neighborhood wants. You know, it's tough to get consensus of thirty people.
Sure.
But that's something that we actually have consensus on, is that, you know, this entrance is for everybody's benefit.
Benefit, yeah, it really is.
It really does, it makes the neighborhood look that much better. And if you have that type of grand entrance, that's gonna increase everybody's value and be good for the neighborhood.
Right.
And be good for the town. Beautiful neighborhood with a great entrance.
Yeah, absolutely.
Finally.
There you go.
So, we'll work with Jeremy on that particular issue then.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's perfect, thank you.
So, I can give the planning board an update, Brian. The selectmen voted to lay out the roads.
Yeah.
The three roads. So, the next step is now, I think on the, I haven't sent the letter yet to Jeremy and to the planning board to say they voted to lay it out. We're waiting. Jeremy's already done his punch list, that's usually what we ask for. And they'll vote to approve the layout. Those two steps happen before town meeting. I talked to Mike Renzi today, November ninth, twenty fifteen. Two years will be November ninth, twenty seventeen. So, I talked to the chairman of the selectmen today. We're gonna aim to have an annual town meeting on November thirteenth, Monday after.
Sounds great.
Hopefully, you'll get a form there. We have other...
Get all your neighbors there. Hopefully, we'll have sixty people there.
And we'll try, might have some zoning from Zebraq on that, so... And some other smaller, and it won't be a long town meeting, but that's what we're aiming for is... But the important thing, after town meeting, the certification of titles have to be recorded. So, the developer's attorney is attorney Jacobi. I don't know that he's ever done that. It's a hundred and twenty days that they have from the date that the town accepts the roads to get those certifications recorded. That didn't happen at Woodland Ridge, if you remember. They had to go back and do the whole thing all over again. So, I'm just concerned that attorney Jacobi isn't going to get... You will sign the my law after town meeting. It's getting those certifications done. So, I'll be glad to talk to, you talk to the developer at the desk or...
Okay, we'll make sure to contact them tomorrow.
Yeah.
And...
We have an ongoing communication with Jack Jacobi, as well as Ron. You know, we, as you know, we've been pushing this issue all along, and it's because we want this to be accepted. And we are in constant communication with them, and we'll, we'll be on them to basically get this stuff addressed. It's in their interest and it's in our interest, so... But it's more so in their interest because all the while, he's gotta continue to take care of that road. And we'll continue to press, press the issues with him to make sure this is done right.
Because he's gonna pass the certification of title past our town council. And Bob, our local attorneys, I'm used to this, you know, there's no problem with it, but I don't know if Jack Jacobi is aware.
Well, I think he does a lot. He does quite a bit of this.
They've been around a lot, you know, over the years. And I don't think this is his first subdivision here in Lakeville.
Right.
I could be wrong, but we'll make sure that we mention that to him.
But that's another thing to consider for the planning board going forward. This whole process, the developers should be paying for our legal fees for road acceptance, because right now, this certification of title, we haven't come up with a policy to hand developers on new, you know, they should be covering this cost. It's not cheap.
Absolutely.
I agree, and that's not the only, that's not the only thing that developers beat us out of.
Right, but I need to...
All of Jeremy's time.
And every time we call a lawyer, and I mean, and we don't, we don't send those bills out to everybody.
I'd like to come up with something when a new sub, like the one we just talked about. You know, pass the state, I don't know who the developer is. But they should know upfront, you know? These are the steps to get the road accepted, and you're gonna be responsible for these costs.
Yeah, we actually go out of our way to save them.
And if we've got thirty, you said thirty houses in that subdivision? That's a lot of certification, titles, certifications.
Yeah, you don't wanna run into a problem before snowbore or plowing season. So, he's got November, right, so you're talking November, December, January, that's sixty days. That's only halfway through.
But it's technically not accepted.
Right, so we wouldn't have to...
Until all that stuff's recorded.
Right, so you don't wanna end up, that'll be much, much more expensive.
Well, I'm hoping that he understands what this is, because I'm not exactly sure what certification of titles are.
Yeah.
I'm not a developer, never have been, but I will be mentioning this to him and make sure that they are aware of this and that they gotta get it done as soon as that is approved and get it done.
Right.
Town meeting, votes, planning board can sign. I think the board of selectmen have to sign the my law too for road acceptances.
But you're seeing that, I think it's not really.
Is this something, is that something that can be done ahead of that, that vote? Like the certification of titles or that's, like, can all the legal work be done? Can't be recorded, but you can have it all, kind of all pulled together, I guess? Good to know.
As long as no one sells a house between now and...
We won't allow it.
See, it all depends on how the developer sold the lots. Some of them are really easy if they retained an interest in them. I'm not quite sure the legal terms of it, but it's how they sold the lots to everybody in the subdivision, whether or not the developer retained an interest in the roadway or they gave the interest in the roadway to the homeowners. It all goes back to how each lot was sold.
Right.
I think he retained an interest.
He has a reservation of rights in the roadway. I know there's an actual document that's out there that, along with the protective covenants and the trust document and everything like that, there's a reservation of rights in the roadway. It's one of the things that is, one of the documents that they handed to us. So, saying that he basically has still all the rights to do whatever, whatever we could do.
Well, once we adopt the roadway, would that still apply?
We just want an easement.
We only get an easement, so their homeowners' association will wind up with a fee, you know, owning the fee for the road. So, we don't have to worry about the one more retention pond. They're gonna own plenty of property.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna discuss the...
You too.
Can if you want to.
Which one?
We...
I'll just, I'll make it quick as to what the zoning board review advisory committee...
Never mind, Peter, we're just gonna listen to Peter.
Okay. Hey, Peter, what do you got?
So, one of the, it keeps coming up as a, as a subject, that's all, that we should revisit. Because, and I made it, I made it clear to Nate and the other committee members that we never see a lot of the lots if they don't meet all the requirements. Nate sees them though. People come in and show him numerous prints, and he says right away, yep, setback, you're good, square footage, you're good, upland circle, you're good, you know? It's either good or bad for all those points. There's, so the upland circle question is, can we either A, reduce it? Can we B, well, one thought by somebody is, get rid of it altogether? I said, my feeling was that that's a bit much. The other one is, does it have to be at the, you know, right at the, abutting the street? You know, right where you have all your frontage? And that seemed to, of the seven members, would that flex enough to help people that maybe have property that they can't do anything with that they wanna do with? And it's Nate's feeling that they may, that in itself might be enough to help these people, you know, out of a jam. And we're not trying to, you know, do anything for people, but is the restriction just too much, you know? Is it, is it, is it just too much with all the other numbers that they have to reach? Is the only question, you know?
Right.
And so, you know, all they want us to do is just discuss it and come back with, you know, thoughts on it. That's all. And then give them something to chew on at our next meeting, you know? Why it's there, you know, we know why it's there. This last neighborhood that we saw tonight is a perfect example of, of how restrictive it is. And then have a, an engineer work it the only way they can. And, you know, had that road been, you know, only seven hundred and fifty feet and with four lots, all still dog-legged, we wouldn't have had, they wouldn't have had to come back, you know?
Right.
So, it's merely just a, you know, just exploratory as to, as to flexibility, that's all.
Well, as far as, the reason why it is there.
Right.
Is because we need a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage.
Correct.
And it's to keep this from going on.
Right.
So, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't, like, put all these bizarre shaped lots out there.
Right.
I mean, I was...
You're right, that looks good when we drive through the...
That's why we did it.
Yeah, I know, makes sense.
I'm telling you, because I was on the board, yeah. And if a hundred foot was what we first adopted.
Right.
It was a hundred foot circle, because, and then I missed a meeting and, or two meetings, and all of a sudden it went to a hundred and sixty.
Right. These are all, these are all points that I don't really have that history of and why we're at the number that we're at, and so...
I was good with a hundred. Because there's not a lot you can do with the front of a lot with a hundred foot circle in the middle of it. It's like, you know, a dog choking on a bone, you know? A hundred and sixty is big.
It's, yeah.
That means you have to go back, like, you have to go back like fifty feet before you can make any angles at all, really.
Correct, right.
So, I mean, I'd be amenable to a hundred foot circles, because that's what we had first.
Right.
I don't know why we went to a hundred and sixty.
Why would these issues, so we have, we have a plan right now. What we're talking about is an exception, a few exception lots. Can they not go through an appeal process to get this?
No.
They can't.
No, we are, we as a board are not allowed to give, we're not allowed to make...
Relief on one of our rules and regs.
There isn't another organism, there isn't another part...
There's ZBA.
ZBA would be the zoning board of field.
They wouldn't.
They wouldn't give it to them?
Because it's self-created. It's very obviously self-created. It used to be a lot, I mean, it used to be a big open field. You came along and put that line there, you know, I mean, there's just no, no way of explaining it.
You have a subdivision, and this is how you can feed your lots?
Oh, well.
Yeah, no, I mean, you have to follow the...
It's all you got.
Right, well, that's, that's right.
No exceptions.
Right, but he's talking about if we had this upland circle, right, and there was a lot, let's say someone owns a piece of property squeezed in between somebody else that they...
Well, people do in town.
They do, and they have a frontage, but they can't, but they can't fit it within the guidelines. So, what you're saying is move the circle to a different part of the parcel, which would be non-conforming, because we like them all in front.
The reason why we want them in the front is so you don't get...
From the street view or as you drive around, that you, you're seeing the bulk of the lot up front rather than flip-flopped, and you're seeing a, you know, but with...
There's no requirement to build the house on, in the circle.
Oh, okay.
None at all.
Okay.
It's just the circle just has to be there. You don't have to build there.
And if you had a large lot that snaked down and then went out in the back, you can just...
Do the road?
Yeah.
Do it back there, okay.
And with the construction of the road and one lot subdivision.
Right.
There you go. So, that alleviates that whole problem.
Because the circle has to touch the front line. You couldn't do the driveway, and that's what they said. There's a lot of nice lots, but there's, they can't get the upland to touch. The hundred and sixty foot wasn't the problem, it was touching the front.
It's touching the frontage.
But you can draw a road, and draw your road on my property, and we put a cul-de-sac, and that's where my circle's gonna be.
Oh, okay.
You're talking...
It would just be a private road, a driveway.
In those instances, that's a very big lot, you know?
Well, yeah.
But there's some that are not nearly that big, do you know what I mean? Three acre perfect lot, you know what I mean? Where you could put, you know, go through the upland and still have your house at the back corner, minding all setbacks with your frontage with...
Right.
And...
Would a retreat...
All are...
Well, I would like to, I would still like to reduce it down to a hundred feet, because I don't know why they went up to a hundred and sixty.
Right.
Because I remember the first meeting, they said a hundred and sixty. I said, a hundred and sixty, it should be a hundred. What happened? Oh, we changed it. Oh, okay.
I'd really like to understand that better, though, because it seems like, I don't know, everything's... Every time I question decision we've made, turns out there was some really good thought that went into it. Like, what was that decision, you know what I mean? And I hesitate to think about changing anything without understanding.
We had a lot of, like, configuration bylaws where they were saying, you know, the first, you know, the first forty feet of your lot has to be perpendicular with the roadway.
Really, okay.
So, you come forty feet off of your, or I think it was forty or sixty, something like that. It had to be perpendicular with the road.
Whatever the frontage is.
Yeah.[1713.94]
So, if, if, if it's residential, it'll be 40. If it was commercial or industrial, it might be 60 feet. But whatever your frontage is, it couldn't get smaller than the, than the frontage, than 175 or the, whatever it had to be. So, and you'll see that on all the drawings, all the people, all of our big engineers-
This one's had it.
Yep.
Always, always show the first 40 feet or 50 feet, depending on where the roadway and who, exactly where the roadway starts, as being not tapering.
And then-
It could, it can go bigger.
And then you got the-
It couldn't get smaller.
And then you got the guy that brings his, his front lot line off of a cul-de-sac. So, now it's gotta be perpendicular to the cul-de-sac. So, you come up to the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac goes like this, so this lot line has to go back this way. And this guy's over here has to go this way. So, what are you doing with the pie in between?
I see. Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right. Yeah, okay.
And it also winds up being back further. So, the, so, so they actually, because it's back further, it, it gets more complicated, but they do it.
So, there were-
The guys, they start, they start back there and they work their way forward.
So, there are a lot of, yeah, but you can't, if you have a, if you have a cul-de-sac and the thing opens up like this, and this guy comes perpendicular this way, this guy, like, this guy here, I guess that does come perpendicular that way.
Yeah. They lose, but, but-
Yeah.
Yeah.
But something ends up getting screwed.
Yeah.
Because this one comes off perpendicular. This guy over here takes a beating. You know what I mean?
It's gotta be above.
Yeah. I, I was hoping on the first, the, the first time, I, I wrote two of them. You know, the, and one of them turned out to be more too complicated. But it was the, in which they build a portion of each lot is connected to the required frontage by a strip of land not narrower than the required frontage at any point, measured from that point to the nearest point of the opposite sideline. And it sounds like a bunch of gum and sand, but that's what it-
Right.
In geometry talk, that's the way it turns out. And all of the engineers and all of the lawyers that we deal with know about that because Nate Darling's grandfather used to have these cardboard, from what I understand, used to have little carpet, cardboard templates on the 40,000 scale and see, and that he'd use on the drawing to make sure that-
Really?
That it worked. You know, he, he had ones that were the depth, the length of the frontage by the depth of the frontage, and he'd lay the thing on there and see if that worked or not.
And our town looks so nice.
And that's why-
And our town looks so nice.
And that's why Lakeville looks like it, like that.
That's, that's-
Perfectly reasonable, but it's not in writing. But, and, and the state suggested it would be in writing. And so, I'll bring it up for this, I mean-
Is that state?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much. It's a... Yeah. Yeah. Everybody takes the same thing that this guy Schmidt wrote, and they put their own title on the front. So, it's hard to tell exactly. It's not, these people didn't make this. It was a-
Some of the tax on Nate needs to prove it. They're not in a subdivision.
Correct.
They just, someone that's owned this land for, you know?
Right.
And-
That's not a Form A? Somebody who wants to cut a Form A out of a lot?
Correct.
Yeah, that's-
I don't know the piece of lot.
So, it's not on subdivision.
Or already existing and they have, the lot is already there and they've never been able to do anything with it. And they've revisited Nate several times, you know?
If there's a lot that's there, that's an existing lot.
Freaking, pre-existing, but no house on it?
Yeah. Then they don't need an upland circle.
Then that must not be the issue. It must be more than one and, and they're dividing it.
Or they ju, right. They haven't, right.
Yeah. But it wouldn't be on a new subdivision. They don't go to Nate.
Yeah.
No, on a new subdivision, we would-
No.
On a new subdivision, however-
I asked how many times this comes up because I'm curious. We never see this. It's already done. And you know what I mean? So, he says it comes up more than you'd think. And, but, you know, I think they all realize that this, this kind of decision makes a, it can make somebody's day, and it can also ruin somebody's day. You know, so you have to be careful because you can't, oh, you know what? That upland circle's a bad idea. Let's get rid of it. Well, there's gonna be like a lot of people that'd be like, whoa, 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 I've had an empty lot next to me, you know, my entire life. You know, now you're saying, you, you know-
Oh, yeah.
So-
You have to expect that.
Right. But this, because it comes up, that's the purpose of that committee. If, if it never came up, it wouldn't even be an issue.
Right. Well, I, I don't, I don't favor eliminating it because I've seen-
I have already mentioned that.
I've seen the misery of it.
Right.
And I can bring people, I can show people subdivision is the misery of it.
And, and this last subdivision that just came in tonight is a perfect example of that easement change in the spring alleviating some of that from, from Nate ever seeing this issue.
Right.
So, it's, it's, it's getting closer. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And so, we have a meeting in a cou, in a week or two. I'll talk to them about, about the reduction and see what their thoughts are. Because, you know, Nate will see the, the plans that people bring in and I'll ask him, does 100 help, you know?
Right.
And I can't see changing it to 100 hurting the other people around. Do you know what I mean? All that, if, if it frees up some people and lets them do what they want to do, then-
Yep.
You know what I mean? So-
And if, if he wants, if he wants to see where I had the problem, tell him on the other side of the train bridge on Holland Road. Okay? Hadn't pulled that subdivision.
Right. Okay.
This, the, the first one we started with this morning-
No.
Are, I mean-
One on the other side of the road.
Heading towards a-
I know where he's talking about. I know exactly the subdivision. You're right.
I know. I built some of the houses.
Okay.
And I thought it was perfectly fine. And I was looking at it like, wow. That guy's backyard's right there. Right behind this house is his backyard. He just enough room to squeeze a house in there.
The, just for everyone's edification, the one at, on Cross Street, that, you know, not only did we get relief from, you know, that, that change, but there were also, there were several lots there that didn't comply
Right, I knew that.
with that, with that angle. So, there were, there were, there were more problems that would, we would have gotten into even without, even if the road were a different length. There, there were still other issues that were, that were minor compared to, you know, the, the big one. The, the big one, you know, solving that changed a lot of stuff, but that wasn't the only reason.
I know.
So, just, just so everyone-
I heard, I, yeah.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, there were plenty of things that were solved. There. It wasn't just the length of the road.
Was that their main thing when you had, when you-
For us right now, we got, you know, we have like a, a list of stuff we're compiling and everything's gonna come to us. But that's more like, before we could do anything, they wanted to see what our thoughts were about the upland circle and about how, how we could work with it. The other stuff, sort of, they're gonna come up with a, a change and they'll present it to us. And then we'll have the appropriate hearings before November 13th. Most, most of it's fairly straightforward and housekeeping issues tend to just keep coming up.
Sure.
Because we started at the very beginning and we're working to the end. So, we're a little bit after like the appendix right now. A few pages in.
Definitions.
Definitions and appendix, yeah.
Res zoning of Staples Shore and Industrial B.
Industrial B, we were gonna do this past thing, but it wasn't, we wanted to handle it the same way we rezoned anything and, and a butters, should be thing. It's the best thing and it's a-
And owners?
Yeah, owners and a butters. Yeah, the owners, they didn't even know about it, correct. And so, that's gonna be all done for this meeting. And that's, that's just a cleaning up of the map of Lakeville. So, that's a, it seems, I haven't heard a single person say that they didn't want to do that, you know?
Except maybe who has an industrial piece of property on a, an industrial B property and-
The biggest one is Bay State Sewerage. And Nate has talked to him.
Right. And they're there, you know?
He could almost call his agricultural.
Well, he is at agricultural land, but he was thinking even if it was just own business.
Right.
Because he's got, what, 80 acres?
Right.
So, Nate will talk. I'll update the-
Well, if it's just business, then he couldn't, then he couldn't stockpile. Then he couldn't have any piles of anything. At least with industrial, he's allowed to have piles of stuff.
Thanks, manure?
Whatever.
Anything.
You're not allowed to have piles of anything unless you're industrial. You know about piles of stuff.
Yeah. Guy across the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just-
Who's not allowed to have it on, in, in industrial B?
You know, I was just, I was just helping you. I was just giving you a softball there. Are you through with your?
I am.
I, I have one short report. There, there was some committee of the MS4 permit stuff and it's, it's been, it's been canceled again. This is something that's been around since the late 80s. A lot of people have been following it, the stormwater control stuff, but it's gone again. And maybe in a few years, it'll-
Come back?
Come back.
What's that?
The stormwater.
Having to do it?
Well, the permit, the, the MS4 permit has been pushed out exactly one year. But I think this is something different.
This has been, this, this says it's pushed out one, one year, but it's, but, but we were only planning that one year anyway. But this, this is all, yeah. It, it looks like it'll die.
You don't think the Mass DEP will pick it up?
I don't think so because they haven't got the money to pay for all the stuff that needs doing.
Or they just mandate it. We do it.
No, no. I mean, there's a lot of money to, there's an awful, awful lot of money to spend and towns are running out of, you can have it. Yeah. No, it, it was just interesting, but, but, but it costs money is the only problem. Everyone agrees with everything they do. Of cour, of course, you want clean water, but, but, but you, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah, see, just till next July. But with the town, we're still moving, moving forward with our notice of intent. You know, we're not going any faster.
Right.
But filing our notice of intent and just gives us more time.
Yeah. No, it's, but, but it's, it's really been around since the, since the 80s. I mean, the people, people started with, people created some small businesses. You know, like small civil engineers and stuff like that, thinking that the whole world was gonna change. And they were gonna be doing all that and everything just went away. It just, and then it never, never ever came through. And now it's all of a sudden, it's, what, 30 years later?
As far as stormwater protection goes, SWIP and stuff like that, I'll tell you something. Walmart follows that because they've gotten sued so many times by the federal government.
MWRA sure did.
Yeah.
They took it seriously and they created a whole harbor out of it. But-
Fortunately for us, most of our urbanized areas are the state's problem, not the town's.
MWRA, yeah.
Right.
They're around state properties, state roads.
So, do we want to approve meeting minutes for July 13th? Is anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I read them.
I read them, too.
So, do I?
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Serini, we already scheduled two, two meetings, right?
Mm-hmm.
What time, Bob?
I cannot be there for 9/7.
Okay.
Traveling. And the other one was the 9/21, right?
Mm-hmm.
Which is gonna be a public hearing, right?
The 7th?
Yeah.
Yeah, both. Now, both dates.
Both dates, yeah, the public hearings, yeah.
And upland circle is also in our, in our subdivision rules.
Oh, it has been.
Oh, okay.
Right? Yeah. 160 foot?
Yeah. No, it says as defined.
Yeah.
And it refers back to, so it could change to whatever. So, you don't have to change anything here. Just whatever the town carries, but it, it does cross-reference it.
Can I just ask the board one question about the legal ad? I got the proof back for the hearing for Red's Road. Do I have to wait for the ad to actually be published on August 17th to give that to the, I'm supposed to give it to the engineer and he's gonna notify, he does the mailing to the butters?
The engineer does?
Yeah.
Oh.
We don't.
That's his cost.
Right?
He's supposed to show he did it.
Oh, is he gonna, he's gonna mail out the-
Yeah.
He has to do certified letters, doesn't he?
It's a legal ad. I have the certified list of butters and then they have to bring in the cards to you.
They charge the developer to deal with it.
I'd give it to them as soon as you could.
Comes here.
Well, this is just the proof. It hasn't gone to anybody yet.
Right.
Right.
Do I have to cut the actual legal ad out of the paper or can I just send him the proof?
Why don't you send him the proof?
Okay. Pauline was in today and I didn't even think to ask her. Okay.
I think that's what we used to get.
Yeah. See, that, that first time it shows up in the paper is at least two weeks before.
It is. The 17th and the 24th.
But this gives him even more.
More time, yeah. Okay.
Well, are we all done?
Picking adjourned.
Will be. Is there any old business?
Any old business we haven't already talked about?
So, is Janice already?
Stand by.
We kept him waited too long.
She's leaving to go to Disney.
Oh.
She's got an early, early date. Taking her grandson and her-
It's gonna be hot.
Cool.
No, he hasn't been there before. It's a tough time. I went in July.
It's not too busy, though. Was it just as busy?
Yes.
It'll be always busy.
And this goes back 25 years ago.
Oh, wow.
Makes the water parks fun.
Yeah.
You didn't adjourn?
Nope.
Do you have a handout that we give to, to builders when they're putting in a subdivision? Do they get, is there something, like they have a package other than the formal?
Given something, planning board many years ago and it never went anywhere.
There's- It should be pretty easy to understand
Because we have-
by any Massachusetts lawyer and any experienced Massachusetts developer. It's almost impossible for anybody else to understand it fully. It's just really difficult. I mean, you, you, you know, it, it's not the kind of thing, it's really easy to tell somebody how to do.
You know, like for Paul Turner, this is his first subdivision in Lakeville. You know, other developers, you know, over the years have done several developments, so they know the process. But for somebody like Paul Turner,
Yeah.
he doesn't know what is down the road. How is his road gonna get accepted?
But the recapturing of, of expenses is critically important and should be passed to a developer. And if we can encourage that right in the run and with a handout or some policy, let's do that.
You know, I was thinking, I was thinking if we take all those fees that we issue at the beginning, we just extend those to be that when the road is accepted.
The new town accountant did give me a printout of a lot of money in the planning board's account for subdivisions that are long since done. Gonna do research, you know, the money should go back to some of the developers. I had given it to Lowell just before she left, but that's a whole nother project of fees that need to either be turned back to the developers.
Fees being turned back?
Yeah.
Why is that? There's something that says if you don't use it?
Like consulting fees if they, years ago, they're, you know, consulting fees.
See, in this case, Paul Turner actually gave a check, I believe, to Pauline at the time for consulting fees.
But there's some old, there's really old-
Yeah. We, we don't, we don't do that anymore. What we do now is we only ask for what we actually consume. There, there used to be a consulting, a, just a thousand dollar, you know, line item. But now in our fees, it's listed as the actual cost.
It should be a pasture with, with, with an administrative fee, don't you think? Because if it's a pasture, so if it's a pasture with an administrative fee, if the lawyer's charging, you know, $400 and we charge a 10% fee, so it's $440 that the town recoups for that expense.
20 projects.
I mean, I don't know.
The ZBA will say we want 20,000 upfront. I have to keep track of, and at the end of the project, any money's left over, we turn back to the developer that is in pay.
But the town's eating your, your time and our resources.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There are, that shouldn't be free.
Yeah. It's, we're not, are, are we? We have to-
Probably get it printed out, yeah.
What'd you say, Zeke?
Yeah, cool.
Looks like it's a grand.
How much?
We have, we have to-
We have to adjourn.
We have to adjourn.
Okay.
And then I want to say something.
Yeah, there's a list that long of different developments. It's all-
Yeah.
Um, get it.
Sixty thousand?
Yeah. Look in the files and see.
Somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna get a check that I wasn't expecting it, though.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.